The flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John, John S. Alicia.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
John H.
Here.
Annette.
Here.
Tracy Ellen.
Here.
Barbara.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
Alan.
Here.
Nicholas. Hannah.
Here.
Caitlin.
The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to provide a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community in an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, and to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with this provision, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place sent to the record newspaper, the borough clerks, borough libraries, as well as posting in the school district principal offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, "The smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violated will be subject to a fine, not to exceed $100."
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comments on agenda items only. Hearing none. We're going to have a presentation tonight on NJSLA testing by Mr. Deloria, Ms. Ali, and Dr. Torres.
You only got one.
I just had one.
It's not disappointing. Just me. Sure. Okay. Do you want me to close the lights, or you guys? Okay, alright. Alright, good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight to present our NJSLA data, and then additional data at the end here. You can also see our full presentation on our website. It's over 67 pages long, broken down, so I'm giving you the highlights this evening for you to take a look at with me. Okay, first, we want to report our participation rates at Riverdale Schools here for our ELA, math, and science. You can see we have really great participation rates for our students here taking the exam. First, we're going to start with our NJSLA ELA data that we're going to take a look at. So the first slide here is percentage-wise, and I'll represent it to you in graphic form. These are comparisons of the district scores to the state scores. As you've seen before, it's broken down into five level categories. One is not meeting expectations, two is partially meeting, three is approaching, four is meeting, and five is exceeding. You'll see there, we have the total number of students in each grade that took the exam, and then going across the district score compared to the state score. And you can see that the district outperforms at the top and underperforms at the bottom, which is a good thing, because there are more students at the state level not meeting or partially meeting those expectations. Here is a graph of that information presented to you, color-coded. Red would be a one, dark green would be a five, just so you have a reference going across from left to right. The top is the achievement of ELA here at Riverdale over all of our students, and the bottom is comparatively speaking to the state scores from left to right as well. The right, all the way to the right being the five, and all the way to the left being a one. And the slide that most people want to see comparatively speaking over longitudinally with our data, taking a look at it, you can see that with our Section 504, which is the second graph there, our student rates have gone up. Again, with our special education, the dark purple going up, and pretty even across the three-year span of our general education students. The ELL students are not represented because the subgroup was smaller than 10 in the previous years, but that's there as well.
Because the bar chart going higher is a good thing, right?
The bar chart going higher is a good thing over the years, yes. That is a positive trend that we continue to output. Correct. And these are general ELA scores for the entire district. You can see them more detailed by grade level, et cetera, on the website with the full presentation. Any questions on ELA?
For special ed, there was, let's, I can't see exactly what the percentages are, but it looks like there was a big jump. Is that more based on number of, sometimes like sometimes the population in a given year, or is it?
10% of our student population in special education, I think, is a pretty substantial number, right? If you think about how many in special education students we have, what 10% of that would be, would be the increase. I'm not sure of the exact number off the top of my head.
Right.
Good? Okay.
Some overall trends, I'm just going to grab the, a little closer.
Some overall trends based on student growth. We've used our technology tools. We continue to use interdisciplinary skills through ELA and social studies, continued integration for differentiation, some student progress indicators, our continued students, students continue to perform, state averages, you can see that quite well. Overall, we have growth in meeting or exceeding expectations, and we had a 10% increase in our special ed population meeting or exceeding those standards. Great. Can now be Ms. Ali, go into math? That got a little shorter. Alright. So here, again, I kept them all the same so you could have like an easy comparative of each graph for you. This is our mathematical representation, again, starting from Level 1 on the left, going to Level 5 on the right. Total number of students, again, you can see district, state comparative data. It's a little easier to see here on this slide. At the top, you can see the district scores, right? The red would be not meeting, and then the dark green would be meeting or exceeding, the light color green and the dark green. You can see, again, there, the trends comparatively speaking to the state, lots of red, especially here in Grade 8 math. You can see a lot of students in the state not meeting or exceeding that. And if you look at this chart, turns for me. John, you can see upward trend here of the graph, again, right, with our scores. We have our ELL, which we can represent here because we had a subgroup less, greater than 10. Our 504 students increased, our special ed students, it went down a percent, so that could just be, you know, right. And then our gen ed students continue to do well and increase those scores. Questions on math?
So, I mean, I know, obviously, math and English, two separate, you know, but given that we had such a jump in, for special ed, in, for English, like, do we know why that same increase in math, or is it just apples and oranges?
It's a little apples and oranges. Could be different kids, right? They're not always classified for every subject area, so. And then overall, 8th grade, as you know, we changed our program in 2425 with our accelerated programming and our entry points for that. And our Math 8 data here does not include our Algebra 1 students. We did put them all together in the data compilation, the middle school and high school students. We continue to outperform state averages in math assessment. We had a decrease in our 1 and 2 level scores from spring last year to spring this year, and an increase in our 4 to 5 scores, which you can see. Notably, just not noted here, but our 8th grade scores also went up in 8th grade math, which was an area of concentration for us in looking at our placement. So when I, Ms. Ali and I debriefed on this, and we talked about how we feel like our placement is working, and our recommendations are working, and our increased access to Algebra 1 is working, so it's really positive there. And then we continue to support our students with interventions, supplemental programs, resources in math, and extra support after school to our students.
One point I wanted to, I know we don't mention it twice in this presentation so far about mathematics, this is a specific change that we made in the last two years with the entry level for our middle school math students, giving more students access to algebra in middle school than we had before. So there was a, I don't want to say a concern that we had, but we were watching very carefully to make sure our students were supported because we didn't want to see a drop in our test scores. We increased the access so students who maybe normally would not have gotten into algebra in middle school were now getting into algebra. We wanted to make sure they were supported as well, and our numbers still went up. So we're very excited about that. We know that it was the right decision to increase access. It's always the right decision to increase access, but the fact we were able to support them when they needed the support, I think is being edified in the test scores now. We're happy about that.
Yeah. As Dr. Alba said, not just for the Algebra 1 students, but also for the Grade 8 math students, our scores went up. So seeing that that support continued, that's a really positive trend we hope to continue. Okay, now for the good stuff, NJSLA science. You've probably sat through here and looked at those scores in the past and probably have been like, what's going on? Because the state averages have been quite low in this achievement. This is on a four-point scale of proficiency here. You can take a look at our 8th grade and 11th grade students that have taken this. And we're going to move through this. Here, you can see that data represented again in graphs, same as ELA and math. But I think this slide will show you our growth here. Again, we continue to grow in this, looking at really good data points for our free and reduced lunch students, our 504 students, our special education students, and our general education students. That went from 42 to 51%, so 9% gain, that's really good. That really outpaces the state averages quite a bit when you look at those data points together. Any questions on science? Okay. So that's the NJSLA part. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that part?
I just have one question.
Sure.
Has anybody ever correlated the math scores against the science scores? Because I'm wondering if they're not receiving the math necessary to do the science skills that are being asked, like, there's a little bit of, like, you know.
So no direct correlation, because the sciences is fairly new, right?
Yeah.
You're free of that. But in taking a look now in this increase, what we did do last year for science is made sure that we spiraled the review of the skills, because the science has been a little tricky to get down, kind of like what you're talking about with the skills that are being tested because it's only twice. So that will be something I'll take a look at and see how perhaps correlates into that.
Can I just randomly tell you something? So the NJSLA science test is really like a reading comprehension test with like a math data analysis bonus. So it's almost like you would have to correlate it to both. It's just, it's a whole different beast, that test.
Right. It's kind of less scientific.
Oh, 100%.
And more. But that's why I'm wondering, is the math skills are playing a role in it? Because I think too, and someone who's been on the board longer than I've been, correct, we had a neat discussion at the high school level of switching the math classes that were offered in order. And I'm just wondering, did we do that? And is it a best fit for the science?
We did not do that, no. We have not done that, no.
Okay. I'm just wondering if that would play into it as well.
When were these tests taken?
In the spring of last year, last school year.
So this is, uh, so this is not assessing the beginning, like, this is through somewhere in the middle of the...
This would be the spring session.
Okay, so when you look at any of these, right, where we have not meeting expectation and partially meeting, it's a huge population. Are we doing anything, you know, very specific for that population of students?
So I wouldn't say huge, but population, yes.
Well, listen, go back to the first slide. If we're not going to huge, maybe let's look at it. Go back to ELA.
We are, as I mentioned...
Go back, go back a little more. One more, right here. ELA. So out of 792, all ELA, right?
These are ELA students, yeah.
If you look at the first two percentages, you got 58 and 91. It's over 150 students. Is that wrong?
I don't think so.
So if you look at that Level 1, the district at percent not meeting expectations, what's the total?
It's 3.4%.
3.4 of the 792, right? 792. See if I could do math.
It's like 21.
Oh, 3, 4. 27 students. And if you take the next bucket, which is 4%, partially meeting, gives us 58 students in those two. And then the percent approaching expectations, meaning it's below, right?
They're approaching, yeah.
Right? They're not at expectation? That's another 91 students. So then total, it's over 150, below. I know we're comparing it to the state, but I don't know if it makes sense for us to compare ourselves to a state. I know we used to, in the old days, compared to our district factor groups, which I think would be a more appropriate comparison than comparing ourselves to the state.
I went with you on that, and it was a big thing in my previous district because we were outperforming everybody in our district factor group in my previous district. But they don't, we don't have allowed to enter that as a slide anymore, the DFGs. They don't let us measure that, but you...
Very good point.
Comparing it to the state, I don't think gives me any comfort, I'll tell you that.
Do we ever, do we ever just look at our peers in Bergen County? I mean, like, we can pick, just like, do we ever just pick other schools that are of similar...
That's the district factor group.
No, I, but because they don't, they don't give it to you anymore, like, what are, like, would we ever go back and just say, let's just look at Northern Valley's doing compared to...
We do, we do. We're presenting our information now, they're presenting theirs at the same time. So it'll be published on their websites if we do pull their data.
And the other question is, when did we get this data? We took the test in the spring. You got it in the summer, okay.
Like, late August, early September.
Yeah, look, to me, although it looks like we're making progress, I'm not encouraged by 150 students that are below.
I think it's important, too, to remember, John, that it is a snapshot of student progress because these are a series of tests that are taken on one or two days in each academic area, and the work and the progress that they make over an entire academic year is very different. And it's also important to remember that everything they learn can't possibly be on a standardized test. There are things that they learn that would be at a more rigorous level than what's presented on the standardized test, and things that are less rigorous that are presented on a standardized test. So like, I understand the weight that standardized tests are given, but the best metric is to talk to your teachers, look at your localized testing, look at your curriculum, and see how they're progressing through the curriculum the district has chosen.
Yeah, but look, I'm not a fan of standardized tests for the record. I actually don't like them, to your point.
Yeah.
But here we are, sitting, looking at them. You action it, you create plans off of it. So they are here, they exist, we have to use them. If you, can you go to math? Keep going, please, to the table. One more, one more, one more. If it cooperates, here we go. So here, again, you know, approaching expectations and below is 200 students out of 798. I would say that's a very large population still. It's a big number.
I'm not disagreeing with you. Realize also...
Now, if the test is worthless, that's a different point. I'm not an educator, so I couldn't tell you the value of the test. But if this is the test we're taking and it's, and we're measuring to it, that's a large population.
It's a valid data point. I will give you that. I don't, I don't discount the test at all. Remember, though, this encompasses not just general education population, this is our special needs population, our ELL students. Everybody's included in the same number, so. And I'm not minimizing what you're talking about. I don't want any student to be below proficiency.
Of course.
We pull the data from each of these tests that we see, and any student that's not meeting or partially or approaching expectations, we look to find the commonalities and the standards that we need to make sure that we adjust our curriculum to address, and that's what we do the rest of the year, to make sure those students are targeted. But the reality is that I don't know for a fact, but I can probably pretty much guess that most of those students are students who have a lot of other pieces in their educational background that would live at them in some respect that require a little special attention.
On the longer version that's on the website, do we provide this analysis broken out by the student population, gen ed versus special ed?
Yeah, it's all broken down by subgroups as well.
Okay, I will, maybe in the future, if you can, when you email these to the board, if we can send both versions?
I was trying to simplify it because of the comments I received in the last, last two years on my evaluation that these were too complex.
No, it's good.
And there are some...
Summary, summary is always great, right? Because we can't sit here for an hour reviewing them. But I think even just a link to it...
Because I can give you the 67 slides and just make that the whole presentation, because that's what the state wants me to do. I'm just trying to give you a snapshot here.
Okay. I did try to do that, John, just so you know, by the subgroup slide here, just so that you could have a snapshot of that, not the in-depth, but the 67 slide also does gender, et cetera.
We just lost this, the levels, I think, right? Did we?
But this is Level 4 and 5.
This is Levels 4 and 5, yeah.
This is Levels 4 and 5. So how do you read it?
Meeting and exceeding Levels 4 and 5, these are the subgroups of that.
So how do you get less than Level 4, for example, from this chart?
You don't.
You don't.
You look at the data there.
The chart I'd want to see, this is great.
It's the opposite.
I'd want to see the opposite chart.
Taken minus 100, you're talking about, right? This is what it is passing.
No, but I understand what John's saying. You want to see...
I'd want to see the other chart.
You want to see the other chart. Well, that, that's...
This is great. This is phenomenal. What does the other chart look like?
We can include that next time.
Okay. Numbers have questions.
John, when we're talking about that number, you were saying 200 and some odd students, we're not talking about them, and correct me, we're talking about them broken into four different categories or four different grade levels, right? We're talking cumulatively. We're not talking a band. So those 200 and something students have to divide in a sense by four because we're different, four different cohorts are being looked at. So that percentage looks like it's more manageable to tailor whatever pivots I think we need to make. Does that make sense? Because you're right, here a number like 260-something students is a significant number that is, could appear to be a giant red flag. But if I'm understanding that, that 260 is divided by four, so now we're going into numbers that are less than inclusive of diversity and special, special need plans within a cohort.
They're within the cohort, yes.
Right. So that 200 is kind of lumping everything together, but we look, we have a tendency to look at things in education, right, as a specific group and a cohort and how to address that need. For instance, our students that came out of COVID or coming into 7th grade are a band of students that we need to focus a specific, certain amount of skills and tasks for, correct? So we're addressing that?
We are looking at cohorts. Cohorts are your, like you spoke to, that's the most even way to take a look at data over time, right? Because, like Doug answered about the population, they can be different students if you compare that. But if you look, track cohorts of students, then you can see trends of student improvement, et cetera.
So we could say safely that our cohort that struggled through COVID and had a learning loss, that group are now exiting. We've seen that progress.
They are, I mean, of age, they are getting to the age where they are exiting, yeah.
Because specifically, there was a need there that needed to be addressed, and we're attempting to address it.
We continue to look at those skills and those needs. I also do want to mention that we use our Title I funds for supplemental program for these students specifically. We target, one of the indicators to qualify is test scores for this, so we offer that to everyone who is either not meeting, partially meeting, or approaching those expectations. And that's what we use our Title I funds for, is to target those skills.
And just for the sake of clarity, so I make, I make sure I'm clear with the way I'm saying this, maybe I'm not bringing it out the right way. We are very conscious as administrators and as teachers that we're not classifying our students by demographic substance. We understand that they exist, we do target them, but I don't, I feel, I'm always in... But I don't, I, I feel, I'm always in fear of sending the wrong message that people are saying, well, you're just saying that the, the students with special needs are the ones that are failing. It's not what I'm saying. I just want to make sure I'm clear in that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they may be skewing the lower end of it, basically.
Perhaps.
Can you go back one chart to, to math again? Now that our educators are talking, go back one more, please. So what happened in, in grade eight math? Not meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations. This looks like there's kind of a spike here.
So grade eight math, remember-
Seven point three percent, fifteen point nine percent, and eighteen point nine percent.
So when I spoke earlier, I mentioned that a lot of our Algebra I students are also, they are included in that in grade eight. So when you go to grade eight, one of the pathways is you can take Algebra I, or you qualify for grade eight math, right? Depending on that. So traditionally, students would be the students who did not qualify for Algebra I. Right? So this is actually an increase in our percentages in grade eight math for those students achieving because they tend to be our students with entry math skills for grade eight. Because our Algebra I students are the top, a little more than-
Are they getting tested for material they don't know? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that.
In, in grade eight, when you're in eighth grade, you're either in Algebra I or you're in Math eight, right? So if you're in Algebra I in grade eight, you're taking the Algebra I test. So you're essentially taking like the top twenty-five to thirty percent of your students out of that grade eight math test.
I know, but look.
No, so but what I'm saying is-
So we go back to what Dr. Albro said. So we, we took the smarter kids and they moved to Algebra. Well, what happened to the other grade?
But they're still, they're still performing, and I'll say only because this is my thing, like, that these are awesome scores for grade eight. These are, the, the grade eight test is one of the hardest tests that they give my, I feel, in math. Historically, they just don't do well. It's a really hard adjustment year, and for whatever reason, that test is, is, is hard. And the kids, and the students don't perform well. The fact that we're performing this well in, in grade eight, and this is my job, like, this is what I, this is important, this is impressive.
But hang on, wouldn't, if a test is built for grade eight, right? Wouldn't it be built off the Common Core standards where the student-
And it gets us-
Oh, and, okay. Wouldn't they, wouldn't we be, we don't want to teach to the test, but wouldn't we teach them the skills necessary for them to do well on the test?
Yeah, of course.
If we say the test is really hard, then what are we teaching?
But I, I think the thing is, you, you said that from the previous year or years, our grade eight scores have gone up.
They have this year.
So we're doing, so we've, 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 because this year is when we, we put Algebra, right, into the mix.
Yes, this will be the first complete year, so the Algebra I kids, we increased access word about thirty-five, thirty-six percent of students.
Right. So we've, we've kind of skimmed off, you know, the top.
The past grade eight.
And then what is left, that doesn't, didn't come out the way I want it. But the, the grade eight students that stayed in grade eight, we've continued to perform better from previous years. So the trajectory is correct, is like where we want to go. We just need to continue.
Compared to ourselves, we're doing better than we were last year.
Than we were.
But the goal was always to reduce that number.
Correct, of course. I mean, it would be, I would like for it to be zero, right? Like, we want all of our students meeting or exceeding standards. I think the scores kind of show that that's what we're working towards and solely chipping away at it.
Yeah, look, not being an educator, obviously, you guys know the tests and all that. So when you look at that, that line specifically, forty-two percent is below approaching expectations. I, I don't know how you want to put it, but it sounds like a big number. It doesn't sound like it's great.
I agree.
It sounds like a huge number. It's half, almost half to, half to, whoever's in that population is-
Can you also just look at how Math seven and Algebra I, so like, the bookends of that, how, how well we're doing there? I feel like that's an awesome, really good indicator of, of our math program, right? So I feel like there's something to be said about the grade of the test. And even if you compare it to the state, which I know you don't want to compare to the state, and I get that, we're still doing tremendously better. Again, room for growth.
I, I never, ever want to compare it to the state because I hold us to a higher standard. Because the state is not a fair-
If you compare ourselves to ourselves, we're still doing better.
But how did you, where is that? How are you comparing it?
Go to the next slide, please. Sorry, that was, that was-
That was, that was very teacher-like, though.
That was, I'm very sorry, that was, that was silly, I didn't mean that. Um, this is it. This is how we're comparing to ourselves in our different subgroups from twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand. So if you look, we're increasing, and this is the level three and four. So these are everyone that's meeting or exceeding grade standards. We've increased-
But where do you see grade eight here?
No, it's all math.
These are all math.
I know. I want to see that grade eight math because maybe something is wrong with that specifically.
No longer cold.
We got a pretty, we got a pretty chart, maybe to make ourselves feel good. I hope we are, we are properly focused, because, yeah, this looks fine to me. But there, there's pockets of data, when I look at this thing as a non educator, looks like we have something to look at.
I think also, John, you have to recognize the taste, the test is not only strictly math algorithms. There's a huge vocabulary component of it as well.
I know, but it's the test that we're being tested against. So either the test is no good, there's a mismatch, right?
I don't own the record with that, but-
I'll, I'll go on the record, because I'm not an educator, I'm not on the hook. But either the test is no good, or if we're testing against it and making decisions off of it, something is off.
We're always looking at aligning.
The data is the test, and you're absolutely right. If it's a larger number or a large percentage in level one, level two, we own that. That's our data. And that becomes our work for that, for that grade level and for that cohort as they move like, from seventh grade into eighth grade. We know who those students are, and that's where our curriculum is adjusted to make sure we're meeting these, those students. That data goes back to our teachers. So the teacher inheriting the student from seventh grade math into eighth grade math now knows where that student is weak. They have this information ready, and they target that information to make sure they start by the areas where the students are weak and then accentuate for those who are, are hardest. So the process is the same, and we hope to achieve growth as we move along. But I, I, I own it. That's our data. That's it. That's what we have, and, and we continue to work the progress, the, the system to get the progress that we need. And I agree with you. I don't prepare us to the state. I would prepare, I, I like the district factor grouping. We are a very, as you know, we're in, in more affluent communities here in River Edge and Riverdale. We are in a higher district factor group. I'm coming from a B with A being the lowest. And I always looked at my DFG, and I wanted to see where am I in comparison to the students that are like my students, that are coming from the same backgrounds, that have the same social economic background that they have. Because that really, to me, was the true comparison. The student in Camden is not like the student in the district where I'm working right now. And that's nothing against Camden, but I know my students are different.
It's just what it is, yeah.
They've been prepared differently, and I know what I'm doing here might be different than what's going on in Camden.
Thank you. My questions are done.
Now I'm going to have Camden calling me up.
And then finally, our DLM students, we have to, this alternate assessment, and there's not much to report here because the district group, the sample size is less than ten, and we're not allowed to sample out, or report out less than ten. But we did have students here, and you can see that they are either at target, approaching target, or advanced in this. I mean, you can't really see that, but you can see that there were students that took it in those samples. I did not report here on the specific number of students meeting those, but you can see where there were tested students, and that subgroup would be less than ten.
So the fact that we don't have anything that says less than ten and like emerging, that means we have no one in that group, right? That's what you're trying to say?
That's why you have zero is there.
Right, got you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Student member report.
Who's up? Caitlin, you have to introduce yourself first, because you weren't here last time.
Okay. Hi, my name is Caitlin Niffis. I am one of the three student representatives. I'm sorry I couldn't make it last time, I had a soccer game.
I think what we're going to have, we have three student member representation, member representative, excuse me. So we'll be rotating, I think, every meeting, so we'll definitely have two here, three, four. They're very involved people, that's the problem. They're not always available to us. Go ahead, what, what year are you?
I'm a senior.
Senior. Okay, well, yours.
So for the middle school, both volleyball and cross country are off to great starts this year at the middle school. The volleyball team is currently nine and O, and will host Cresskill tomorrow afternoon. The cross country team is one of the most highly participated activities in the middle school, consisting of over seventy runners on the roster. The, the girls are currently undefeated against eighteen teams, while the boys are remarkable fifteen and three. It's been an outstanding fall for middle school athletics. The seventh grade field day took place on September nineteenth. Our new students had a blast taking part in many of fun activities, working as a team, and becoming familiar with their new classmates. Our teachers and eighth grade student ambassadors did a great job organizing the events all afternoon. During last week's Week of Respect, students in seventh grade took part in the Show of Hands tradition. Special thanks to the PTSO for providing supplies to make this a very special activity happen once again. The Show of Hand celebrates all of our students, focusing on many backgrounds that make up the Riverdale School community. Speaking of traditions, the Stigma Free Club raised approximately three hundred dollars for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. Students baked and provided treats to South School. Some attended the Out of Darkness Community Walk on October fourth to help spread awareness. After years of student engagement in a partnership with the nonprofit organization Forefront, a new well was completed in a village in India to provide local families with reliable access to clean, portable water. Students participate through seventh grade English classes as an initiative tied to the RDMS literature curriculum.
Moving on to the high school, Riverdale would first like to congratulate two of the seniors, Max Dew and Ethan Sun, on earning the distinction of National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Congratulations to the two of them. Next up, on September twenty-ninth, many of the seniors had the opportunity to visit the Bergen County Division of Elections to train for their roles as poll workers in the upcoming November fourth election. The freshmen are also looking forward to having their upcoming field day this Wednesday alongside with their peer leaders. In addition, the advanced arts students had the chance to visit Strong Hing Art Center for some artistic inspiration as they begin their year of art-making adventures. From massive steel and natural sculptures to woven work, students took photos, sketched, and enjoyed the crisp, fresh air while wandering through the autumn landscape. The Hawks also had an outstanding week with such strong performances on the field with a forty-five to seventeen win for the football team, two to zero win against the Passaic Hills for boy soccer, and one to zero win against Park Ridge for the girl soccer. Lastly, as October begins, we also mark the start of World Mental Health Day and Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We even got a visit from some puppies last Friday at the outdoor court. All in all, Riverdale students continue to strive every day in and out of classrooms, especially with progress reports being released last week.
Thank you. Okay. President's report. I attended the first legislative meeting of the year on Saturday, the twenty-seventh of September. I attended it because I was appointed by New Jersey School Boards to be the new legislature to represent District Number Thirty-eight in Bergen County. The main theme of the meeting was affordability. One thing on the agenda was paying teachers more so that young people will start taking courses to be a teacher in college because the number continues to drop substantially. They also want the state to start fully funding the pensions for the teachers. Another thing on the agenda was how does the state expect each district to enforce the two percent cap when health benefits alone are going up thirty-five percent? The massive amount of construction that is going on at the moment in New Jersey in each of the towns, how do we approach that without crippling our schools and class size? The town of Cedar Grove just tore down an old hospital, and they allowed Hulvanian to build a complex there that has hundreds of families. But every child from that district that comes from the Hulvanian complex, Hulvanian has to pay the full tuition for each child every year. And that's, was locked into the agreement of how to pay for, you know, additional students and all. Another thing on the agenda is that they're going to approach the state to fully fund special needs children and take it away from the district. Because they have to think outside the box on how to not raise taxes any more than they are currently, and how to come up with a funding formula to reduce it. One of the other things are, on October thirteenth today, if you're interested in finding where each gubernatorial candidate is on education and what their ideas are for funding, New Jersey School Boards interviewed each one of the candidates separately, was in a debate. It was to talk for an hour on education. So if you go to the NJSBA website, you'll be able to hear the questions and how each candidate answered them. The other thing that they're petitioning to the state is something to help the BAs in each district. And that is, they need to project out funding for years or more so that the school boards can come together and come up with real decisions instead of waiting until, what do you get the numbers, in February? For the current year. So that was some of the things that were discussed in the four hours. I mentioned the increase in funding. Oh, the other thing is, they're petitioning the state that teachers don't have to live in the state of New Jersey to teach here. We can, especially in Bergen County, we can get teachers from New York, Pennsylvania, Long Island, wherever. I mean, instead of just coming up with a pool from the state of New Jersey, which might help the shortage of teachers. The other thing that I'd like to report on is that every year, NISH grades all the public schools in the country. And I was surprised to find there are twenty-one thousand- Twenty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine public high schools. And the number that really astounded me is that Riverdale came in two fifty-one for athletes in America. So, but the number that was very impressive is that we got an overall rating of A, where last year, I believe we were a B minus and we were a C minus in diversity. This year, we were rated number ten best public high school in Bergen County. And we beat out a lot of our competitors like Pascak Hills. And we beat out a lot of our competitors like Pascak Hills, and Mawla, and Glenrods. So, we moved up very nicely. Academics, we got an A. Teachers that work in the district, we got an A this year. Clubs and activities, we got an A minus. Diversity, we went from a C minus to an A minus. College prep, we went up to A minus from a B. And administration, we went up to A minus from a B. So, I think that's a job well done. This is a very interesting report, and you can go online to see what the ratings are for 2026.
And you said we were 251 out of almost 21,000.
That was in...
So that puts us in the top...
1%. Very, you should be proud of that.
Right. That's pretty impressive, and I'd like to publicly thank the administration and the teachers for a job well done. Superintendent's Report.
My turn. Well, first, I'm gonna, actually, I didn't know you were reporting on District 38 and your role with school boards now, but I was going to congratulate our president, because he was selected among, he was asked to serve on this committee in District 38. And what this is, essentially, is the New Jersey School Boards Association, Representation, talking to the legislators who create the laws and the rules and the code that we abide by. It's important that they are informed by people who are actually in the ranks and in the trenches, like our board president and like all of our board members, as to how the legislation that comes out of Trenton impacts the local districts. And Alan covered a lot on the financial part of it, but there's more to it than just that. There's a lot that comes down, believe me, as a superintendent, and as some of us are administrators here, we scratch our heads like, what were they thinking about when that came down from Trenton, or came out of Trenton? Maybe it makes sense for a specific subset of people, but maybe not for the overall public at large, public school student at large. So I'm happy to have a voice in District 38 that can then get, be informative, and somebody who has the experience you have. So, I was gonna congratulate you until you congratulated yourself.
Thank you.
But congratulations, anyway, and thank you for taking that on, because I know that's a lot of time. That was four hours of your time on a, on a weekend, I'm sure, so thank you for taking that on.
Thank you.
Secondly, you're welcome. We took a tour, just some board members before our meeting. We had a little bit of time after executive session, took a quick tour at some of the projects that are going on. So they are ongoing. The high school auditorium, rooms 216, 17, and 18, our 18 to 21 space in the building, and a couple of other items that we had going on right now. We're at punch list point right now, most of the work is done, our students are using the classrooms, they're not fully functional, like our culinary classroom is not fully functional yet, we hope at the end of the week that it will be. We have two big inspections coming this week with plumbing and fire inspection, so we can turn on the stoves at the end of the week and start cooking in our culinary classroom. They've been doing everything but cooking up until this point, but we're hopeful that next week that will be able to get started. So we're happy with the progress thus far. We'll be on top of our construction companies to make sure the work is getting done. And we're already starting, Trudy and I, to work with our architects to start planning for the middle school projects that are taking place next year. So we'll have more to report on that next month, I'm sure. And finally, to our students, anyone at home that is watching, interim progress reports have been released on Genesis. Students can log into their Genesis accounts, or parents can log into their Genesis accounts and see any student that has progress reports that are listed there. I assure you that a lot of thought goes into them, and I encourage every parent to reach out to teachers, to reach out to counselors, if there's questions, and students, to reach out to the same, there's questions that you have, because that communication is what helps our students to achieve, so. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. John, Budget and Finance?
We didn't meet, but I just wanna commend Trudy and everyone else that was involved. Every time we see, we do a walkthrough, we're like, you know, giddy kids, you know, we're seeing things come together. I know it's been a long time coming, but the auditorium just looks incredible. And it's not done, and it looks incredible, so you can only imagine once the curtains goes up and everything else, but it just looks amazing. I think that's gonna be great. And 18 to 21, we had an opportunity to see it without furniture, now it looks like a real place with furniture. It came out really incredible, so nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
And we did not meet, Budget and Finance.
Thanks.
Dan?
We did not meet, and I was gonna talk about our walkthrough, but I think we've gone down that, so everything looks great.
Did you like it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's good to see it with fresh eyes, because Trudy and I look at it every day, and we don't feel it the way you see it right now.
It looks great.
We just see all the imperfections.
But it is, it is exciting.
Okay. Community relations, anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Curriculum?
We have a meeting scheduled for November 17th.
Thank you. And policy and governance?
No meeting at this time, but there is policy that is slated for a second meeting this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I move on all items designated with an asterisk to be part of a consent agenda and approved. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tracy.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
John S.?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
John H.?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes, with an abstaining from 9A.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes, except for 11D, which is a no.
Alan?
Yes. Okay. 12C. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the second reading of the following policies. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions on any of these policies?
I have one question, I asked at last meeting, I just wanna double confirm. Couple of the items that got introduced here for board member terms, elections, appointments, all of that, the board did not lose any rights in any of these new, newly...
The only changes, I understand it, John, is that they separated regional districts from regular operating districts, like the one-town districts, or it was all lumped into one policy. They now have one for regional schools, one for VOTAC schools, like county schools, and one for, like, the standalone schools.
Which remember, whatever we have, whatever...
Yeah, but we, nothing has changed, no. The way we fill vacancies is the same, the way we elect is the same, the apportionment is the same, nothing has changed. You're welcome.
John S.?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
John H.?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes. 12D. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the reading of the following regulations. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Alicia.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions here?
I have a comment also on this one, I reached out to Dr. Albro before, maybe you can clarify for the whole board, it's not a first reading, this is not something...
Yeah, so regulations, it's for your information, as board members, you don't really vote on them. We're voting on the reading of them, which is fine, but regulations are, it's something internal. The policy is approved, the regulation is a companion to the policy, the regulation is essentially how we enforce the policy in the district. It's not something that the board votes on, I just include it so that you have the information that there is a regulation that exists with some of these policies.
And we don't have a choice, it's basically a regulation.
I don't have to, yeah, I don't even have to put it on the agenda, I can just have a regulation, but I just...
It makes us informed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
John S.?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
John H.?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes. 13H. The superintendent, at the request of the board secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending September 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, John. You have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second, John? Any questions? Okay, Trudy?
John S.?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
John H.?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes. 12R. I would like to make a motion on the carryover resolutions from our executive session agenda. That would be 3A, 2, and 3, 3B, 1, and 2, 3E, 1, 2, and 5. The resolutions are for approval of maternity leaves for staff, rescinding previous appointments for clubs, and new appointments to replace them, appointment of two building services employees to fill vacancies, and acceptance of a resignation of a building service employee. Do I have a motion?
I'm a...
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a second? Thank you, Robert. Any questions? Okay, Trudy?
John S.?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
John H.?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes. Okay. Old business, new business. Okay. Anything for board discussion?
I don't know if this is the right place, I just wanted to piggyback on John for saying that we were able to walk around the building, and I had the privilege and the opportunity to attend the open house for the 18 to 21-year-olds. And I just want to thank the teachers and the staff and the administration, to see something come to fruition is absolutely amazing, but to also see the look on the parents' faces, to know that their children are so valued and going to be so well taken care of, reach their highest potential, was very humbling, but I also want to thank the communities, because we were able to pass a referendum with support of everyone in both communities, and I think that's a kudos to where we live and who we are as two wonderful communities. But I just wanted to say it was a wonderful experience, I'm so excited for the students who have the opportunity. By chance, I happened to see two more of them outside the library, because they were out on, on their transition, they're doing their outside opportunities, and they recalled me, we briefly had a conversation, it was just, it was humbling and wonderful to see, and I just wanted to thank everybody who really makes everything come to fruition. And the look on the parents and the students was just kind of mind-boggling, so I just wanted to share that, thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing that.
Thank you for coming, too, we appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, at this point, I'd like to open up for public comments. All right. I'd like to close it for public comments. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.